Okay, I'd like to bring the work session again of August 25th. Working off the revise agenda. Any questions on the minutes from August 11? Alright, so let's move into the items for discussion right now. State aid reductions, please.
Yeah, just, I think we could go back to the agenda for a second. Tonight's agenda, there were a number of additions from the version that was sent home on Friday. So I just want to make sure everyone has the updated agenda for the 7 o'clock meeting. And we did have a couple of additions, some resignations, some leaves, appointing our music teacher. We had a music teacher who we hired earlier in the summer and then she resigned to take her full position. So this is another person for Mrs. Silva's leave replacement. There are some temporary appointments. We're also recommending the appointment of the head custodian as well as the secretary for the, who will be moving into the facilities department, replacing Jen McKeon, who's, will be transferring to PES. And then there's a resolution about transportation agreement with Lindbrook. I think this is, it's reword about that in the update. And our safety plan, I think that was already on the agenda. And then budget transfers, so there were some additions. If anybody has any questions about those before the 7 o'clock.
No, the only thing is with the Lindbrook, is that something that we just picked up with? I knew we had them out.
Yes, just took me just a little longer to finalize that.
That's great.
But those were the two I've been working on since last winter. And we kind of hit a little bit of a stall, you know, with the COVID and we managed to finalize Lindbrook late, but we got them.
That's absolutely great. So that pretty well, does that pretty well cover our private school transfer?
Um, well, yeah. We still have to contract that with a couple of different vendors. But the reroutes that I had been looking at to work with the neighboring districts, we already were to go ahead with Stew and Lindbrook and one in Malburn. So we hope that this is going to be beneficial. Certainly going to be beneficial financially. We just hope it works out and maybe something in the future.
Jackie, I really appreciate that because I know you've been working a lot on that. It does help us a lot. Thank you.
As part of the district wise, we'll see if you can, did anybody else have trouble with that? Like, maybe my firewall isn't.
Not at all.
She wanted, if you just email me, I can, you know, be active to acquire.
Okay.
You don't like?
Yeah. Rich Hs, he's a, he's a long time, Rich Hs. Rich Hs Stone is teaching for.
Oh, yes.
I guess it was 30 years ago. He's like, now he's including.
Yes, I just saw his substitute teacher. Okay. Hey, so Jackie's going to talk about state aid reductions. This is something that we've been anticipating. And Jackie will explain it and then maybe we do a little commentary and see, hopefully that this may not actually come to fruition completely. But I'll let Jackie discuss this item.
As we discussed several times, especially during budget, the new state budget allowed for periods of time in which the provision of budget could go back, look at the expenditures that they were spending in the state and also look at the revenue that was being received to see where it fell in line with the budget that they presented. So they prepared a budget based on anticipated expenditures and anticipated revenues. So they had several periods for them to look back and say, hey, are revenues higher, are revenues, or are they lower? Are expenditures higher or lower? We all had a good feeling that the revenues would be decreased because people are out of work. So they're losing, you know, a lot of revenue in that way. People are not shopping. And we really knew the expenditure, expenditures were going to increase because there are more expenses under the pandemic with state New York. So they had talked about 20% reduction in state aid. At that time, we had thought it would be 20% of the foundation aid, that it would not be 20% of the electricity, just foundation. So last week, at the end of the week, they announced that they were going to hold a 20%. We hoped it would be less, they said up to 20%, but they did in fact go up to 20%. Not only did they go with 20% for the 2021 school year, but they withheld 20% of a receivable owe for the 1920. That is something we did not anticipate. So every year, school districts have a small amount of money that the state of New York owes, the state aid. It's usually received in July or August. So they withheld 20% of that. We told us when it was due, they would probably be 20%. And that was approximately $134,000 that we did not receive that we anticipated. The 20% going forward for the 2021 school year is not for a foundation aid like we had anticipated, but it's our total state aid between state aid, including the expense revenue. That's a huge difference. That is a, I want to just make sure I write, I gave it the number right because it's 1.4 million, almost 1.5 million dollars if they do in fact withhold, withhold 20%. Now, the state has not been clear. We've been trying to get answers. They don't know whether or not this 20% is permanent or if it's just temporary. You know, I hope, yeah, this is temporary. I hope that it's just waiting for federal aid. That's been, you know, what we've been saying all along. They've had two periods already where they could have cut the state aid and given us notes and they haven't. But all along, the government has been pleading to get additional federal aid. So our hope is that this aid will be returned. But at this point, we've lost 1.6 million dollars.
We're hoping this is a strategy to put some pressure on federal government. I mean, now that districts have been informed what the actual loss is likely to be, you know, maybe people will take notice. You know, I really think we need to write to our legislators. We need to have our PTAs and our parents made aware of this when we come back to school, asking our super PTA to do letter writing campaign. I mean, I think sometimes we're never really sure whether these things work or are effective. But I think our legislators need to understand how this is impacting us and not just the state legislators, but our, you know, federal government as well. Because they need to put pressure on the federal government to release aid for schools. They keep talking about it, but now, you know, they've not reached any agreement. There's threats to veto the packages. And so if that does not come, it will become a reality. We're hoping it's a strategy to just open everyone's eyes and awareness.
Where does the 1.6 get distributed to, like specifically? I'm sure it's not just one specific area, right? It probably goes to a few different areas?
Actually, no. They just, it's, you know, it's like you get taken a cut in your salary. You just get that much less money. And we have to figure out how to bridge our, how to make reductions in our budget to bridge that, that loss of revenue.
That I understand, but where, say, say it was received, where would it have gone?
It would be considered revenue. It would be used it for the cost overall for our salary.
So you could decide where to put it on your own terms? Alright, that's what I'm trying to find out.
Yeah, faster to the development of the budget as a revenue.
Just one source of.
So you could push, you could put those, those funds in anywhere you see fit.
Right, so we use, we have one pretty much bucket of money, you know, one pot, you know, one gown, so to speak, for the general fund. And then we expense out of that for various, various expenses, our payroll expenses. And we choose how that's done. And that's all done and determined on the budget process. So now when we have a loss so significant, if it turns out we did not get, if it turns out they're going to keep it, we would now have to decide where we would reduce our budget to accommodate that loss of revenue.
Where do you think you would reduce it? What would be, what would be the first line of attack, basically? What would you reduce first?
Not a lot of places for us to cut.
Right.
And I think, you know, when we were building, when we were building the budget and looking at, and concerned that the budget might fail because of the method of voting, turned out it did not. But, you know, we had looked at, Jackie had prepared and put aside, you know, money in our reserves that we would be able to apply reserves for, you know, any shortfall if the budget went down and possibly if we have a cut in state aid. But we haven't gotten that far, but you do have, we do have some money in reserves.
So as, you know, as we've discussed that, last year, there was quite a bit of money that we did not spend when the school closed. I mean, what we did is we gave up that money and we kept it. And we held it for just such an event. And that will carry us through most of the shortfall. It, it depends on what happens going forward. If they decide that this money will be, like what happened back in 2009, 2010, when we had the last financial crisis.
That's when I got access, 2010.
And that's when we accessed quite a few people. Unfortunately, I got to live through that too as a business official. And what happened is the first year we survived, we got federal funding. The second year, the reduction became a reduction. And so going forward, we had to figure out how do we move forward with the budget and spend much less money.
Right.
And that's when, and I've been saying 2021 school year, 2122 school year is the school year where we're going to really start to have to look at, where can we cut costs? But we really are very tight in this condition. We really are.
And, you know, aside from that, we're really facing increasing expenses to, to real schools.
Right.
You know, there are a number of, people hear about, you know, when we talk about the facilities preparation expenses, things that we've expended on and additional personnel that we're going to need to hire, additional personnel because of some accommodations that need to, ADA accommodations that need to be made for certain employees, just purchasing additional equipment like the cameras and tripods and our Chromebooks have not come in, may not be coming in until October. So now we needed to purchase some additional Chromebooks so that students who are on remote learning, you know, everybody will be equipped and have what they need for the hybrid as well as the remote learning. So we have a lot of additional expenses that we are being asked on a regular basis by BOCs who is acting as an agent of the state to find out what we are, you know, how much, what are we expending on and how much have we expended so far, just relative to COVID. But, you know, that's good to know how much we've spent, but we haven't received any relief in terms of aid for those expenses yet. And they're considerable.
Yeah, as of, you know, as of right now, and I'm just sharing it for the first time. I was working on this afternoon, Superintendent Ebbin and I had that time discussing. But we spent close to $80,000 on supplies, cleaning supplies, barriers, desk shields, farders. Yeah. Well, masks, you know, the whole list that you saw the other day that we presented. So we spent close to $80,000 on that already. And we have spent so far close to $49,000 on additional cameras and tripods and other to enable us to distance learning. So we have over $128,000 into this already that does not include additional staffing that we're looking to put in place to keep up with the planning of the schools starting today. Typically, we have one custodian in each elementary building, two in the secondary building. That is not going to be enough when we have the students in the schools and we need the service of the desk. Well, actually doing pretty well with that.
Really? Oh, that's great.
A lot different than I thought. But we advertised a ton of papers.
Oh, that's great.
Three, five people.
Yeah, yeah.
But we've also had some people resign or take leaves. And then those people will be replaced. We also will have a few teachers who will be on remote assignments due to their medical condition. And we will need to hire teacher aides to be in those classrooms to provide physical supervision for those children while the teachers teach remotely from home. And so in those cases, those parents will be notified that that will be a unique situation for those classrooms. But, you know, we need additional personnel. And there may be three people, three teachers that we will have to cover in that capacity during those periods. That, you know, they teach five periods. So we would need those periods covered with a teacher aide. And that will have to be new hires as well.
So those teachers, those students, that classroom will be completely online. Well, in school, but really virtually.
Yes, it'll be almost the opposite. It will be a hybrid. The kids will come in every, every two days in the high school, but the teacher will remain home. And the teacher will teach from her, his or her home. And then they'll need to, because we can't leave kids alone in the classroom, they, they will need another responsible adult in the classroom to provide supervision, make sure kids are on task and really to monitor student behavior. Our administrators will be in those classrooms at the beginning of the year just to make sure that students understand. Again, the parents will be informed of this unique situation. But it is something that we're required to do based on the reference with Disabilities Act and accommodations. I had 11 or 12 accommodations meetings with faculty members. And, you know, these individuals warranted that home assignment. As, as I indicated in the update, working closely with our attorney as well as our school doctor to make a determination as to what were the appropriate accommodations we were obligated to provide. So those are expenses as well.
And that's not, there's no relief for female or anything like that, right? State of necessity?
We are filing, we are filing. They are going to reverse 75% of costs. I don't know if there's going to be a cap, you know, so we'll see. We're hopeful. But it is, we are outlining it first.
Sure.
And that's, that's always, that's always a cash flow concern.
So what to kick back this whole thing is when we were forced to spend down reserves, everybody around the state was forced to spend down reserves. And now even looking for extra reserves, they're not going to be there in the course of the percentage that we had to live by. So do we think there'll be any lobby in the back, Jackie? And what can we do as a board?
So on that note, that's my next, my next knowledge. You're ahead of me, but I got notification today that they were going to, they passed legislation to loosen up the reserve, the use of reserves. But there's of course always a catch for anything that's going to save the law. And so they'll allow us to use reserves from other funds. Reserves that are set aside like we set aside behind the plank that we set aside for employee retirements for specific reasons. But they will allow us to use money from there to fund only specific costs to COVID. But we have to repay it over a five-year term with interest.
You can argue.
Repaying ourselves.
Yeah.
Over five, and who knows? I mean, from the last time, it took several years to dig ourselves out of the loss of revenue. So I was like, oh, they did this once before many years ago with retirement systems when we started to spike. They had given all school districts an option to go on an average and not pay the whole thing, and again, interest. So you know, you start seeing these interest costs being added to your own money. You know, you can't help but wonder, you know, like really? You told us to spend down the reserves. Now you're letting us use the reserves after the pandemic, which is, you know, a lot of us always liked to say it was for emergency purposes. Many like to criticize it as rainy gave funds. But honestly, that's what it was, you know? So that the residents didn't have to feel these spikes in their taxes. And now we need it desperately. And now they're saying, I'm sure you can have it, but pay yourself back in five-year term and pay interest on top of it. So it's, you know, every time they give us something, we think a little bit more.
I don't understand the purpose of that. You, you paying interest to yourself.
It's kind of like how they did it with the public, they can borrow from that 401Ks. And when they take a hundred thousand, it's free, they're worried about it.
They want to discourage you from doing it.
Correct, you have to pay it back.
But you have to pay interest, but that interest is going back into your own account. So it's really, you're not paying any, you have to pay it, but then you still have it.
And that doesn't apply to the 4% fund balance, whatever we have over the 4%.
And that's the money we have set and that will help us through this year. That 4%, that above the 4% that we, we put on the side from the money we saved.
When the auditors, we have the audit committee meeting in October. You'll get the audit report, the audits completed now.
Yes.
And so they will provide their report to the board and the, the auditors will come in and they'll explain and they'll talk about all the different reserves and explain, you know, the, some of them have kind of, some of them have very specific caps, like the fund balance is 4%. You're not supposed to have over 4%. You can get your hands slapped if you do. If you, we still haven't received our state audit back. We had a state audit last year. They were here for months and months and months. And I don't know what happened because we never got the report. We never had the closing meeting.
Exit interview.
No news is good.
Right into that. And it just never happened. I think the man was ill, I'm not sure.
We've called a few times.
So this was an external audit or an internal audit?
It was a New York State controller's audit last year. So we, we do have an internal and an external auditor. So this summer is the external audit that we go through every single year when Jackie closes the books. And then they, the auditors come and report on that to you in October.
Correct.
And that report gets filed with New York State. So in there, they will point out certain concerns that they have. One of them usually is, is if a district's over the 4% fund balance. But as we discussed last year during budget season, and, you know, I would bet every district had a fund balance above 4% because people saved money from March until June. And that's where that money went, anticipating that there would be expenses, either a cut in state aid, either a failed budget or just additional expenses for COVID reopen. So, and other reserves are not as strict in terms of what, what the limit is, but they do have reasonable amounts. You shouldn't be over a reasonable amount. And that's determined district by district. The auditors could speak more about that in October.
We could, if you really were that interested in looking at how we determine our fund balance, our balances and our reserves. Their reserve plan is posted on the website.
Okay.
In the business office for the last couple of years. We posted as to what we consider reasonable, what our, what our method is and where we are as far as meeting that goal.
Good.
Jackie, would there be a state aid reductions that we're receiving? Is that why the county, would you be able to get all the districts in county? Just to see how we fare in comparison to other districts?
Well, I mean, yesterday got 20%.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that.
Across the board.
I know, I understand that. That's what, that's the 20% actually meant to the district.
Sure, you mean like the percentage of their overall budget?
Yeah.
Right.
My only reason for saying that, I think that it gives people an awareness of exactly how we're getting hit versus Lindbrook or versus Yule. So when they, everybody, everybody shops, we all know that. They all look and say, well, how come that district can do this? How come that? Well, if you see the reality of everything, you can see in front of you. I think that's a good way to go about the cuts, you know?
And state aid is, state aid is also a different amount, a different percentage of everybody's budget. So you have 20% of, some of the wealthy of the districts.
Which are much smaller.
Yeah, and even if it's the dollar value, like their state aid may only make up 3% of our overall revenue source. Where are state aid for significant?
Or a district like Roosevelt or Hempstead where when they get a 20% cut in state aid, it, it could devastate their entire budget. So so much of their budget is made up of aid from the state as opposed to the percentage of ours is more, because we're considered an average needs district as opposed to a low needs or a high needs district.
I just think that would be good for the future, you know?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
So I, I really would suggest that we do try to contact our legislators, let them know what our concerns are and how difficult this is. You know, when Judy Griffin had her forum, it was great because we all got to see what it was like for, from everyone's perspective. But I don't think there was a lot of conversation about the costs at that, on that forum. At least I don't recall, it was four hours, that there was a discussion about the costs. And that's, you know, that's problematic is that people, I don't know if our legislators and even, you know, at the federal level realize how this is impacting us. You hear it over and in general on the news, but on a case by case basis and what the expenses are can really be devastating. Really, and we have to spend the money. We were waiting and we were holding off and we were, we really were until it got to the point where we just couldn't hold off anymore. We had to, like, start spending money to cover some of these costs. We remember, if you remember in the spring, we were saying, well, we're going to wait. We don't know if school's going to open, if school stays closed. Why would we go and have all this hand sanitizer? We may be closed anyway. We had to pull the plug because we have, we had to be prepared. We had to get to the point where the supplies could be low. And now that we are purchasing in 95 masks, you know, there was a spike in other parts of the country. That's a national supply chain. And so our order of 295 masks was, was on that order. Now we just did receive it, or Jim purchased from another vendor. But, you know, you can't wait because if you do need those items and we do now have to have them coming back to school and we are going to open the schools, so. So it's problematic.
Okay, you want to form that for future board meetings?
So Tina, oh, she's not here, but she had brought to my attention from her district clerk, Lissar, that districts, the executive order allowing school boards to close their meetings to the public and hold them via Zoom only is expiring on September 4th. And so some districts have already begun to have public meetings in public, you know, back in their auditorium, limiting and social distancing, taking temperatures, filling out health check forms. So I wanted to discuss with the board where you see us going, moving forward. Again, our work sessions were always open to the public. We generally had only a few visitors come to those meetings, maybe five at most, and did not generally livestream them. We did receive a request yesterday for someone who was interested. And so we are livestreaming this work session. But we, our next meeting is September 8th for a work session and then the following, I guess it's 15th for the public meeting. And we, again, this work, this executive order has expired. So we will need to move into public, open public meetings. We can limit the number of people that come in the auditorium. Some people have given the PTA a certain number of seats. The union heads are invited to come. And then, you know, whatever you can fit in the auditorium, socially distanced appropriately, but with certain parameters where we do take people's temperature. Some districts are doing that, some districts are not. But everyone would need to fill out a health check form because that is a practice now that we, you know, we do that in our school with our employees. And so we will have a remote way to do that on the door. Anyone who wants, well, it would be different. We would send out the QR code and anyone who wanted to come to the board meeting, we'd fill out the form in advance. So I wanted to throw that out there and see how you would like to proceed with the meeting starting on the 8th. And actually, we are also going to talk about the need for an additional, that's the next item, the need for an additional board meeting because we do have a number of appointments, personnel appointments that will be pending. And, you know, although we have in the past appointed people retroactively, we prefer not to. We don't, and we really aren't supposed to do that. We're supposed to appoint and then the start date to be the day after the board meeting. And so we will have some part-time custodial workers. We have monitors, we'll have the teacher aides. We have some leave replacements that came up at the last minute. Some teachers have decided to take leaves. So we will need to appoint these people before school starts. So we would like to propose that the night that we do the walkthrough, if we could possibly postpone the walkthrough until September 3rd. And that would give us a time this week, the rest of this week and next week, to interview, to check references and to be ready to hire, to fill these positions. And then hold a very quick special meeting just for personnel appointments on the same night that we do the walkthrough. And then have those, actually, that meeting, if we have one on the 3rd, could be via Zoom. But after that, they would need to be in public. We can still livestream them and we have been livestreaming all our meetings all last year anyways. So that would just be continued practice. I imagine the board would want to continue to livestream.
I'm sorry, why can't we keep the walkthrough on the first end?
Because we don't, we figure we could use the two additional days to finish interviewing and calling references. The principals are interviewing furiously for some leaves, also for the additional teacher aides we need, the additional monitors we need. And I know a lot of them are coming out of Jackie's office.
What if Seth coming back?
Seth is coming back on the 2nd. And I think we're just trying not to have the board have to come in to give a notice, the first and the third. The third is, would be the front. The first and the third, the third is, would be the, the front of the day.
This is a couple more days of work and chats. And it also gives us a few more days to get the buildings in shape. Jackie, during my super intense reports, I didn't give a report about where we're at with our buildings. Uh, the partitions, um, the barriers, the bigger barriers that are going between the pods of desks just came in today. So those need to be installed, um, and they're working furiously, maybe working over Labor Day weekend to install all of those barriers. So, I mean, we can still do it on the 1st, the walkthrough, and then the special meeting on the 3rd, if you agree, or?
So since the teachers are coming on the 2nd, correct? On that, um, have you discussed this with the union reps as far as are they comfortable coming into the buildings? If we didn't do that walkthrough, the walkthrough hasn't been dynamic?
Yeah, the walkthrough is not a requirement to have staff return. And the walkthrough is actually not something we're doing because of COVID. Obviously, the focus would be COVID, but, um, yeah, no.
I mean, it's always done, we always do walkthroughs, we come back because we want to make sure everything's the right, the way it should be. So I just, I just don't want, it's, it's.
I, I'm actually not sure that's the reason for it. I think it's the board, you know, it's not to, that we can't have people in the building until the board approves.
No, I, I wouldn't be, uh, that's not what I meant. I meant is that you want to do the walkthroughs that everything is the way it should be on opening day. That's, that was my understanding when I got on the board, that's how we've been doing it. So if, we're saying that everybody is okay with this, it is not more anxiousness than staff that's returning a couple of days before the walkthrough. And that's why I'm relying on you, all right? And to tell us as the board so that we're, everybody is comfortable with this.
I, I think they are because the ERTAs actually approached us and asked us to do their own walkthrough, um, which of course we said absolutely. Um, the executive board has asked if they could go into buildings and walk around. So I will be doing that probably, um, next week, Monday or Tuesday. Uh, again, not everything is going to be in place, but they want to see what the classrooms look like. We have taken some pictures, um, but we will be doing a separate walkthrough this year because of COVID. So they want to be reassured that, um, and we never do that with, with the teachers because there's no need to do that. The buildings are always in beautiful shape when we come back. The students have worked so hard, um, and all of that work is still being done. But in addition to that cleaning, that thorough cleaning, which I think we're very much on schedule in terms of the cleaning because we were closed in the spring and we started the cleaning early. It's more the COVID-ready, um, work that's, that's going to be done, that the union is interested in looking at. So that's why they had asked if, if they could, and of course, we agreed.
Regarding the walkthrough, what percentage, I would say out of 100, is completed in terms of finishing the building, getting it ready? What petitions are up? Where are we at, do you think? I'm just, you could check that.
The barriers and, uh, the shields have just started to come in.
Uh-huh.
Um, so at this point, I'd say we're at 10%.
Okay.
Um, we have moved desks around. A, a lot of the time has been spent moving furniture and access.
Into storage.
Into storage, access equipment out of rooms to maximize the capacity. Um, and into a storage facility, so it's been, uh, quite the task. Uh, setting up the desks for the capacities by rooms. Um, sometimes we've had to alter that many times, you know, when capacities have changed. We've got late registrants. Um, we've often had to change classrooms because one grade got distracted children and they wouldn't fit the class fit in. So we've got a lot of moving furniture. It's really what we've done this year, is we move furniture, not stop. Um, we do have all the proper amount of desks in each classroom as per the enrollment counts as of last week. Um, and so we started on Saturday, we started to add, um, the actual barriers and shields on students' desks. We started in rain. We have started, uh, probably 75% completed doing the employee barriers. So many desks, um, like the main office or the psychologists or the social department.
Security desk.
Security desk, those where there's a very limited amount of space between the employee and the visitor. We have installed many of those shields already. We started that last weekend because they came in earlier, and now we're starting with students. So I would say we're probably 90% done with the employee shields and about 10% done with the student setups. Hopefully by next, next week, uh, we could say 50, 60%. You know, many of the employees have been in the building. I mean, teachers are coming in, they're going in the classrooms.
They're setting up.
They're setting up.
Doing bulletin boards. There, there, actually, some of them, we've asked to, uh, kind of remove their own things or pack up their own things because we needed to make room for more desks. And so teachers have been paid to come in and pack up their classrooms if they've had to, to do that. So that's been taking place as well.
So the first was the revised walkthrough day?
Mm-hmm, yes. And we can keep that if the board.
So, no, I'm just asking how I can wrap my head around. So the first, you would say approximately, you think you'd be at what percentage?
Minimum probably 50, 60%.
So my point is getting to this, so then if you're at 50%, I mean, we kind of figure, I think as, we can see what it looks like, but I know you want to see it fully, right? That's your?
Well, they're trying to make us not come in twice.
Yeah.
You want to come before the teachers. Can we come on the 1st, walk the buildings and the 3rd is soon? I mean, I'm fine either way. Personally, I, both days work, I just try.
I'd be fine on the 3rd as long as what Lisa just reassured us and, and Jackie is that the teachers, okay, are not, you know, uptight. They, they're gonna have their own walkthrough first, is what I heard, and that'll ease their mind. So if that happens, I have no problem going to the 3rd at all, you know, if everybody's okay with that.
That was me deciding to go on the 1st, so.
Oh, so then it's, you know, better. Okay, so I'll clear my schedule.
Not you.
Okay, so we'll do 4 o'clock, the walkthrough on the 3rd, and then followed by the, we'll follow at about 6 o'clock would be, um, two hours.
Probably more than enough. I mean, it's not like we're going to be looking at the same thing over and over.
Okay, so.
Typically, I will show you improvements to the buildings. Now I'm gonna be showing you best shields and barriers and new furniture.
We did not do a lot of work.
We didn't do any real improvements, it just wasn't the time.
Or we haven't money.
Yeah, all of my, well, the money that was set aside for that is what I was using.
So, so the walkthrough would be what time?
Yes, that was the question.
For, and then followed by the board meeting. Jackie and I will talk with James and see about how long the walkthrough will take. Either the meeting, we could schedule for 5:30. And I'm telling you, it'd be like a 10-minute meeting just to approve the personnel appointments. So that we're following, you know, the rules. Again, we have made emergency appointments retroactive. We prefer not to do that.
Because we believe there's gonna be quite a few, not just one or two. I mean, we are, I got a leave, you know, this afternoon, so they're coming, coming at the last minute.
We have another, uh, uh, ERTA member who is asking for a full-year medical leave. So we're hoping that person, position, we may not even invite. That was rather sudden, and we just found out about that. So we may not have that position hired yet, so. But aside from that, we do have, uh, a, a teacher who we granted the leave at our last meeting. Uh, we will be ready with that appointment. We have another teacher who took an FMLA. Hopefully, we'll be ready with that appointment, a, a teacher at center, a teacher at rain. Um, and then a number of auditors and teacher aides, uh, we hope.
All right, so let's do it, let's do it.
Now, with the, uh, the meetings, I think the quicker we get back to normal, get back to the, uh.
Pete, I agree. I, I mean, I don't know how everybody else is, but we were the first. If you remember, what we said, we wanted to meet up in a library.
Yeah.
Face to face so we could see each other.
Yeah.
And we get a better vibe of what's going on. So I would love to go right back as soon as we can.
I mean, there's plenty of room in the auditorium.
It's not like we're back now.
I have a question also about the board meetings that are live. Would we allot a specific amount of time for questions if there is an audience?
We do.
So that we don't have like a four-hour meeting because parents are going insane? Do you allot, do you allot a certain amount of time and how much time is that?
We have a policy for that, and we have a two-public comment section. One is at the beginning of the meeting and it's for any items on the agenda.
Right.
And then at the end of the meeting, we have another public comment section, uh, section. And we limit those to three minutes. And Tina does bring a timer and we do keep track.
And she has a timer too. You turn it on.
Actually, a little sand, one of those egg, sandbag, right? An ancient concept. Um, and, uh, we do ask peo- uh, people who want to speak to fill out a form. And we also can post a form or we can have, um, we haven't really done that, but once the meetings are open to the public and you go, and if you are going to limit the number of people coming into the auditorium, I mean, we, you know, at most, we, we have 20 people who come to our meetings.
You're probably gonna have double that now just because of everything that's going on. And everybody's an expert and everyone wants to sell, tell their two cents to it. So you might have a little bit more traffic this time. I'm hoping not.
Our meetings have been going well. Our meetings have been going well, but what are you hearing about here, no?
Meetings have been going well.
Anyway, it is what it is. We welcome, I, I.
That's what you're saying.
I told parents last night, bring the questions on because they help us to vet everything that we need to do. But we could have, uh, someone with a computer open, um, checking the board of that email for questions during the meeting. Um, and somebody could read the questions for people who are, um, um, watching at home and livestreaming. Because we're, we're now restricting because of the Zoom bomb, um, you know, and livestreaming is different again than an interactive Zoom meeting like we had last night. Where you can post questions and, uh, you know, you have a password protected. This, because it's a public meeting, it's not by invitation only, it, we, we can't run it that way. It has to just be an open, public meeting that's livestreamed so we don't have the opportunity to post questions because it's not necessarily safe. So, uh, we, but we can bring a computer and maybe Tina or I can certainly monitor the board email for questions.
Sure, and then the, I find Stan's correct, we're still gonna livestream.
Yeah, yes.
So this way, if, if, if we ever had an overflow meeting and we had stop entrance, the whole of it watching, you know, just get their rally, get a seat, and that's the way the board gets that. That might be fine.
And would the board want to offer, uh, like some districts are, you know, seats? But we, we can determine what the maximum capacity of Jackie, we could ask Jim to determine. Because I think we already determined that.
I think he knows.
Because we have, uh, the seats are going to be actually marked in the auditorium like when you go to the doctor's office, they tell you where to sit now. So our seats will be marked and, um, we'll know what the maximum capacity is. I doubt we'll reach that.
Right.
Did you want to, uh, invite, you know, give the PTAs a certain number of seats? The union a certain number of seats? And then the rest, the general public, or just the general public?
Sure, you could allocate the number of seats for.
Probably a good idea to allocate some.
I, I think that any one of those organizations that services schools should have the first dibs on the seats. Show them any one, and then from there, for guests.
All right, we'll work on that. Um, and we'll plan on that. Uh, again, the work session, we, we should probably move those to the auditorium anyway because we would not be social, unless you want to continue to have them here. And we could have an audience here. But the conference room where we usually meet, which is in the high school conference room outside of guidance office, is too small for all of us even to be socially distant. There's no, and there's no, there's air conditioning, but we're, the windows, we're legal, the windows open.
That would work out well, right? Are we gonna continue to livestream this? I mean, we're covered, correct? And people can fit, how many can fit in here?
The only, the only thing I, I think, we teach a lot is this is going to be used as a classroom. So we will be, but you see all the desks over there because it was set up as a classroom.
So they would start it this way, they just move the desks, right?
Yeah, keep moving the students.
Or we could, we could move to the auditorium, then we wouldn't have to.
Just represent the auditorium.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
All right, so we'll hold all of the meetings in the auditorium. The work session, and, and you want to start this, uh, on the 8th? And hold the 3rd, the meeting on the 3rd?
Go to the first, uh, the 3rd?
The 3rd?
Go to the 3rd, right?
Sure.
And are we there in our walk-in high school in the auditorium?
Yeah.
Is air conditioning?
Yes.
Okay, I probably will, um, not, I mean, we'll post that meeting, obviously. Um, I, I guess I can ask Mary to let people know and we'll put, post something on the website about, uh, capacity. Would you like, how would you like to monitor, um, questions during the meeting?
Let's do with.
Press admitting is good, no?
Yeah, I do, I like that, we have a computer. Use the board of that account.
Who would you like to do that? Because I'll, I'll bring them. You want to bring your own device? You want me to supply a device for you to log into the VOE email?
Yeah, we have a device from the school. Yeah, but, yeah. It's part of it, set up for a meeting, and then we just start having it open.
That, Don, you'll monitor that?
See myself on the board, that is.
Okay. Uh, the disclaimer, so the last time we met, we talked about, uh, posting something on our website. We even sent it to you, um, to take a look at. And Doph had suggested a wording change, and so you should have a copy of it in your, um, packet. Yep. It says draft statement for website.
Looks good.
Do you have any comments or?
The only thing I can recommend is that, like, obviously on the Twitter account, some of them are very self-explanatory, but I would have, uh, no idea what, um, the well, like ERSD Wellness. Guess at it.
Okay.
Guidance is obviously, but maybe just who it is, you know, so that people know.
Yeah.
Um, what they don't, Kobe's Rockaway, I have no idea. Is that athletic one, Kobe's Rockaway?
Uh, I think, I think that's, I think it is.
Right?
Yeah.
I just guess, but I think a description would be great to tell people.
And they'll be live, we can live with all of them?
Yeah, that's great.
That's awesome.
Okay, so we'll put it on the, uh, on the side in the news. Um, there's three boxes. When you're on the website, there's the photos, that's, that scroll. And then on the left, there are three boxes that have current news. We can put it in one of those boxes for now. It will drop off and go down when we have other important news, but we can say, keep it up there for a month. You will tell me how long you want it there. It'll always be on the website. Um, but it may not be, you know, we, we do use those for current information that we want to bring to people's attention. So we'll keep it there like a month, and then it'll drop down.
Right, and then we just keep reminding people.
Okay.
As we use the long, that's, that's fine.
Would you like this sent out globally and to connect dead?
I think it'd be terrific.
That's a great idea.
It's a great idea. Everybody understands it, sees it.
Jackie, do you have that at the end of the week? So, you know, we post it for your further reference on the website. Good?
Yep, great.
So, um, we wanted to update you on the, um, re-entry plan. Um, we can't wait to stop talking about it and actually do it. Teachers like, today we had a meeting with teachers, and let's open already. They were, they were really fun. Um, I, I know a lot of people are anxious, but a lot of people do want to get back in. And, because the planning is just, and talking about it and the extra information that keeps coming our way and the new requirements are just very stressful for everyone. But, uh, today we did have a meeting, um, and I'll turn it over to the second in a minute, where, um, we wanted to speak with the teachers about what the requirements for the full remote option would be. We have about 185 students, which is a lot, who opted for a full remote model. Um, we have had a number of parents who are kind of swift, wanting to change their mind, and we are discouraging it. Um, if someone has a real medical reason with medical documentation, we will still accept it. But we really have closed it off because, um, if we, you know, we're trying to create schedules for our students and classrooms, and some parents have picked remote, now they want to go back.
Yeah.
And again, the classroom numbers were based on the numbers we had at the time. And we did extend it, um, twice now. And since we changed the full, to a full, uh, everyday model for K3, um, we extended it. We said, well, we did change the model, so. We said, well, we did change the model, so I'm going to suggest we extend it a little bit again. We did, but I think, you know, we're going to cut it off now until, unless someone has a medical documentation for themselves or someone in their family, or if it's a brand new entrant that came in and has those, meets that criteria. So I think parents were very appreciative of us offering that. And, and you know, parents have written me some of the most heart-wrenching emails just about their own angst over not being sure what to do and what's the right choice. And, you know, waffling back and forth. So we've tried to accommodate everybody, we think we're pretty stable now. And so we met with teachers to talk about what the expectations are and tomorrow night at five o'clock. We will send you, we're going to talk about sending out the emails for meetings. We will send that out. We're not posting those because of the Zoom bomb that happened. We are sending out the meeting links about a half hour before the meeting. And then the password a few minutes, you know, a little bit later after that. So it will be two separate emails, the link for the meeting and the password. And they, those are only invitation-only meetings. Obviously, we have a board meeting, there's, we're not going to invite people because we actually can't invite the parents to a board meeting. We would be like addressing a certain segment of our population in the community. And we're not supposed to do that. But these meetings obviously are by invitation to the parents who belong there. So we did set up Connect Ed groups for just the remote parents. And tomorrow night, that meeting is for the remote parents, so they will be invited. So we will send that out to you, it starts at five, we'll send it out about four if you're interested in participating. Again, these are just for your F Y I, if you like to sit in. But we will be presenting expectations for parents as well tomorrow night. So I'm going to let Mona talk a little bit about what that looked like this morning. We had, I think, almost eighty teachers.
Yeah, we have more than eighty. More than seventy teachers, it was a great turnout, we met for about an hour and a half. We presented a lot of information, they asked a lot of questions about the fully remote model as well as some other things. Obviously, there are a lot of questions still out there. But, you know, now that we had our plan together, our K two, three students coming in daily, some classes, as you know, split within the building, but all students onsite daily. And then hybrid for four through six, and then six-day cycle hybrid for seven through twelve. Now with these number of remote students, we have to make sure that they have access to all of that instruction. So we spoke at length with the teachers, it's very specifically by grade level what that would look like. But we expect that synchronous instruction is going to be available to the students, whether they're in the building in a separate location, whether they're on a hybrid model and on a remote day, or if they're a fully remote student and learning all time, all the time from home. So the teachers will be using their Google Meet connected cameras and be able to ensure that students will have their schedule, whether it's a high school student, they'll have their daily schedule as if they were in the building. If they're an elementary student, they'll get their class assignment, their teacher assignment, their schedule for that class. And then they'll have access through Google Meet for those instructional sessions throughout the day. So, you know, different from the spring, what we've really worked very hard to do now is be very proactive so that families understand what the schedule looks like, what the time commitment is for the different subject areas and be able to prepare in advance. So we're really committed to making sure that fully remote students have access to the learning. We know it's not going to be exactly the same as if they were in school. And, you know, we're going to be honest about that, there's no way to replicate it completely for a student who's at home full-time. But we're going to do the best we can to ensure that they do have that access to the instruction. And that they're able to, if, if possible, you know, participate with asking a question from home, participate in an activity, just as the students in school would be doing. And then, of course, being responsible for all of the learning, all of the activities and all of the coursework that's required. So again, trying to replicate it as best we can. We do know that those students need support. So we are going to be elicited from the teachers, the, the hope that many of the classroom teachers themselves or other teachers in the department or grade level or even teaching assistants will agree to be sort of a support manager for the students who are remotely. So we'll assign, for example, an elementary student, either their classroom teacher if they're interested in doing so, or again, another faculty member to those students on that grade level who are learning remotely. And then we'll give them extra support during the week through two to three thirty-minute sessions where they can check in with those students, monitor their progress, give them feedback on their work. We'll see with the classroom teacher, if it's not their own classroom teacher. And really, and this, like, everything else is really a work in progress. We're going to be monitoring it, we're going to talk to the teachers, talk to the families, finding out what's too much, what's not enough, and really assessing and modifying it as we go. But we want to make sure that those students not only have the access, but also have the, the support to have questions answered, get feedback on their work and really, you know, continue with their learning, even though they're not onsite.
So just to interrupt for a second, Mona, we do have, as you know, a Twilight program. We do, we have budgeted for that the last number of years, we run that program through O C's. This year, because there was no Regents exam, there were no Regents exams, we did not have, we had hardly any failures. And so generally, students who attend the Twilight, it's a credit recovery program for kids who have failed a course, who need to repeat a course, who maybe couldn't fit something in their schedule because they had failed in the past. So we do have money in the budget for that program. And so since we, we may, we may be running it, it depends, sometimes in January we start to see students need to catch up or for whatever reason. But we don't expect to be able, we don't expect to run that program at its full capacity this year because there was no Regents exam. So we will be dipping into some of those funds to pay teachers these, for these extra assignments. Because we do recognize that it's an extra burden on the teachers to now run a remote. They're running their classroom, then they're running their remote, and then they're running the full remote. And so some of the teachers have already said they, they don't want to do it, they have enough on their plate. And so either the teaching assistant might do it, or someone else in the department might do it. But we do feel in the beginning at least, those kids need to have a personal connection who are on full remote. Parents may say, that's too much, my kids are sitting on the computer all day as it is. They don't want to sit for another four hours after school and, and be on a computer. But we're going to try it out for the first month and then we'll monitor it very closely, monitor the attendance, get feedback from parents and kids and teachers as well. But the teachers, we did ask the union what they felt was fair in order to run this remote program. And how could we support teachers but also compensate them? Because we were asking them for something, you know, to do something over and above. And they, they thought our idea was great. And we asked everybody, we said, anybody else have another idea as to how to support these kids? And so we went with this model. Yeah, it will cost us a little bit, but, you know, we're not paying supervisions. You know, we pay teachers to super, well, we may be, athletics is going to happen. We will be paying some supervisions, but we will be paying coaches' salaries right now. Clubs are not operational and so, and we don't know what athletics is going to look like because I, I understand middle school athletics won't be running yet. So, you know, we think that teachers will take advantage of it because it is extra money. And what we think in order for this model to work, we, we need to make sure the kids are connected and supported, you know, at least in the beginning. And then we'll, we'll constantly evaluate how this goes. And then Mona's going to, we'll be presenting, Mona will be presenting tomorrow night to parents as well. And, and asking parents that, you know, parents wanted this model, that we will be expecting their commitment as well to support their students, make sure their kids are participating, their attendance will be taken. They can't just not show up. It's, you know, we will be looking into, it will be, you know, in a form of truancy if kids don't follow the schedule and report to the classes. Because, you know, that wasn't, attendance was not taken from March to June. So it was a very different model than this will be.
You know, you asked Lisa, it's possible as we, that the program rolls out, that we're able to get some kind of report back about the attendance, making sure that the kids are taking advantage of it, which will spend money there. You know, this way we know whether they keep it running or not, if it's worth it enough. But yes, we did. My other question was, do we do any consideration, Mona? As we're programming extra periods, as I learned through the parent meetings when I was listening, is that students who are behind, can they be filled in with classes that they're still lacking? And we can give credit on during the course of school day?
In their current high school schedule?
Yes.
Well, guidance is scheduled students for all of their classes, I'm not sure I understand.
Just what, through the parent meetings, what I was understood, and maybe I'm wrong, is that students will be scheduled for some extra classes because if there were gaps, we're trying to fill those gaps in.
Rather than having study halls?
Correct.
Oh. That was instead of a study hall.
So has that been looked at for the students who are behind in credits? So that if it happens to be that study hall theory, they can pick up a class?
Yeah. They wouldn't get assigned a study hall. Those kids would not have been assigned a study hall if there was a class that they needed to take. That's scheduled in by their counselor.
So class from the past, right?
Yeah, yeah. Guidance, yeah, guidance does that normally. And those, those kids don't, it's the kids who don't need any additional credits and don't want to take an elective that get a study hall. But, you know, we don't want the study halls a little problematic, so we schedule kids for more electives. But yeah, and, and that's a matter of course, in guidance. And of course, when Twilight is needed, it will, you know, will run.
Yeah, we've been fortunate the last few years since we've added the summer school program. Our students who needed those courses have enrolled in summer school for the most part, caught up then and then been able to start the school year caught up. Where in the past, they would take some courses in Twilight when we didn't have a summer school. So it's been a nice addition to add to summer school and also then it's reduced our need for Twilight. But as Lisa said, in the past school year, for example, we didn't have such a need in the fall because those students had taken summer school courses, caught up. But then by the middle of the year, there are students that we identified and we ran a few courses for the spring semester through Twilight.
This was an item. About coverage, drop-off and pickup?
Yes, in, in the parent meetings, it was quite a bit to talk about. If a child was scheduled for a certain place at a certain time, okay, that, so if I had two children at school and they were like five minutes apart, ten minutes apart, one of the responses was that, you know, the parent should drive out of the oval and come back. And knowing the kind of congestion we have, is it possible that, you know, the parent at that point in time, the child who's waiting, they wait with the other one. So if they know their brother or sister's getting out five minutes later, the parent should show up at the later one. So this way they got to pick them both up at the same time, not to go out and come back in.
Yeah, that's not true.
I see it as a total, we talk about the high school, we talk about the high school particularly. And that's the question that was asked by a parent at that time. And, you know, and then it was stated that we don't know if we have the person that was outside. And I said to myself, I thought that was odd. You know, we have security, we have plenty of, you know, A P's at the end of the school day have always been outside. The principal's been outside, the P's been outside, security's been outside. So I just wanted to make sure that we're okay with the fact is that parents shouldn't be driving in and out of the oval. To get back in the oval, taking over twenty minutes.
Yeah.
And then the kids are waiting there anyway.
Especially if you're trying to catch train.
I see.
Get it.
Exactly. So if we can make sure there's an adjustment somehow that the parent is not told, get out, come on back, you know.
Yeah, okay. Well, in the morning, there'll be a holding, some kids will go to the gym and somewhere. But they could, you know, and it was the drop-off. It was, you had those staggered times. And it was, you know, the one kid could go in at the one time, but they didn't know if they would have the coverage of personnel in the other two locations at the time. That, that all the kids that was coming in. So maybe they'll all be there at their own time, like at seven forty-five, the rest group showed up, something around that. We will accommodate, yeah. At least they are, so if you can have those kids, they are able to go into and leave those areas. I, I know that the auditorium will be used for kind of holding pattern, the breakfast program will be open. And then the gym will be open for the older kids. So I don't think that would be a problem.
That's a lot of work.
And the kids arrive at different times, so, you know, in general. And once extra help starts, we're going to hold off on extra help for the first month just until we, there's so many variables. But when extra help starts, then that will also ease the stagger, you know, having kids arrive in a staggered way.
Cleaning schedule, Jackie, one with you?
Sure. So I just wanted to give you an update on where we are.
Twenty-one minutes.
Okay, I'm quick. Where we are and what we're thinking. So in the high school, we currently have two full-time staff in a day. I have arranged to bring in two more people midday to assist. So that will be four staff to full-time, to about three and a half to four hours. Midday to assist with cleaning the bathrooms, the bathrooms, the doorknobs and such. In the elementarys, each elementary building has one full-time staff. We've arranged to have some of our other staff members walk there for three to four hours in the middle of the day again to do the cleaning of the student desks after they eat, the bathrooms and handrails. And we are also looking at potentially bringing in a substitute also to help in the elementary garden in the middle of the day. Because we do feel there'll be a lot more need in the elementary buildings. Because the students are eating in the classrooms, unlike the high school where they're eating in the cafeteria.
Right.
A lot easier to clean, you know, fifty, sixty desks at once in one room than it is to clean twelve desks in twelve different locations, so.
We're going to use the mats though, right? The paper mats?
Yes, we will be using the paper mats, but we still need to wipe down the desks and, and the garbage, so.
Jack, would that be about four people also in that? Because you'll go through that pretty quick.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was told I had twenty-one minutes. My God, Chris! So just the elementarys, we have one full-time staff. I have a part-time in there utilizing our ground skies. And I'm hoping to bring in another substitute in the middle.
We'll put it in the update.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, we can put a schedule in the, once the schedule's all developed, we'll put it in the update.
And we will be working, I'll be working with the head custodians and I'm meeting set up with each of the principals on Monday morning to discuss, you know, what our plans are and how we're going to roll them out, so.
Any other questions about unplanned or any other aspect of schools reopening?
Actually, my only question would be that when we reviewed our policies for a while, that those policies that we reviewed that really would be reflective of the reentry plan, such as the computers, right, and also the conduct, code of conduct forms, that somehow formally would get them out to the parents. Because normally what we do policies, we don't send them out to parents and say, these policies have just been updated. So my reason for saying that is because these two are really crucial in the fact of parents understanding and, and students understanding what they're up against in the event that things don't go right for them and they're not doing the right thing. And I think it would be a really good idea if somehow we get them out there.
Well, both of these policies that you mentioned go out and they are signed, the parents have to sign off on the code of conduct. And then the acceptable use policy, the exhibits is what the parents sign. So they get the policy and they get the exhibit which is attached to it and they have to sign that. The child has to sign it and we get them back. So both of those always go out. So that's why we wanted to get them ready for the beginning of school. There are a number of new policies that NISBA has in their policy update that we planned on leaving this week, but we have to postpone it. So hopefully we'll get those done sometime. We will probably put them up on the agenda for review because they're the next group of policies that NISBA sent us. So with your permission, I'll put them under the review section on our agenda for actually next week's meeting, just so that they're sitting there, that means we work on them. And then we can adopt them in October according to our policy schedule. We have to keep them up for review for a month. And then we, we will meet before then to look at these specific policies related to COVID that school boards have recommended.
Lisa, did you want me to take off of review, the opioid, opioid strong patentization federal funds? Or are we thinking about review?
Oh, we can, they can stay for review. Yeah, because we're not ready to adopt them. So they can sit there. So today we had, very quickly, we had a meeting with the Living with the Bay team. And it went fairly well. The, the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the permitting that they are requiring us to sign. One of them is needed signature, my signature as well. We had the scope of proposed work form, the smart growth form. We had permits for the whole project, which was the bulkhead, the generator, the parking lot. And these are standard forms that our environmental consultant was on the call with us. John Brillo was not able John Grillo was not able to attend with us. But they've, they asked for some additional paperwork from us, which we will be able to provide to them. They were, you know, very pleased that we'll be able to turn these permits around for them so quickly. They said they're encountering still a little bit of delay with regard to the Army Corps of Engineers. If you remember, the Army Corps wanted the, us to reposition the bulkhead. And we are opposing that. And we pushed them to, you know, provide an explanation as to why that would not work. They're still waiting to hear back from the Army Corps of Engineer. So it, you know, it's interesting because we wait a long time for things to happen and then we get a little pressure from them while we're waiting. But, you know, we are, we want to comply because we need this to stay on schedule. So right now they're a little bit behind. They're about a month behind because they're expecting, they were expecting to start in September. They will not probably now be starting until November. And that is keeping fingers crossed that the Army Corps responds back and approves that permit. So we're hoping that they have that November start date because John Grillo needs a March start date in order to start working on the field. So if they don't start by November, it's going to delay the field project. So we will hopefully write them a letter stating such. I will also be contacting Senator Comiskey, who was very helpful the last time we had a delay in kind of giving them a nudge.
Now, I know there was some resistance from people on the other side of the river. Is that?
Well, that, that could happen when they have the common period. And that's something we won't have any control over. But so that, that's the plan where we stand now. Their plan is to start the bulkhead in November, turn it over to the district by March 1st for the, for the field to start. They're going, they're still planning on installing the generator in the spring and the parking lot in the summer and complete everything by the summer of 2021. And again, they're still waiting for the HUD, Army Corps of Engineer and SED permitting approvals. But we will provide everything that they need by tomorrow or the next day and hopefully get a guarantee. Our environmental consultant was a little concerned that what will happen if they're late. But it's, I don't see that we are, we are going to have control over that. We can do everything we can to push them. But, you know, it will be what it'll be. And it's, we just hope, we'll keep our fingers crossed that it's finished by March 1st. So that's where we stand. But are there any questions on that?
No.
I'll see that is.
Um, I think we have at least almost a, in your updating, you have the computer use and instruction. And for that one, who would you just add?
There was one typo in the, in that, in the, sorry. In the exhibit, I believe Mary corrected it.
These are the ones we went over.
Yeah.
You guys mean?
So I think we just, we will, since I thought remote learning started out and joined us and used some wording that you had had up on the website, correct? That's what we added.
There's also in the parent letter that we sent out in the spring about netiquette.
Yeah.
Netiquette. I like that word.
Netiquette, that's a.
So, you know, that language of Mr. Schaper, his team reviewed so that it was flexible enough to address any of the issues that are in the acceptable use policy, which, you know, covers it in and of itself. We can obviously take disciplinary action if students are not complying with the acceptable use policy. We hope not to because now the computers, the devices are essential. It's an essential piece of instructional equipment. But we will be reminding students and enforcing that. And the code of conduct reflects what it needs to in order to be general enough that it can address those online behaviors.
Miss Delling Lee's was.
Yes, yes. COE, right?
Yeah. And I thought the policy was good. I think it's real good because it has teeth in it. You know, especially if you're in a side that was so remote and using computers every day. So it would be good.
Thank you, Kristen. And I think we had a really productive session. And then the student health services, that just was reflecting, removing the language for religious exemptions, which are no longer allowed for education. So we have to remove that language, allowing that. Then the field trips and excursions, Kristen, you had the best notes from there.
Yeah, so we apparently were in a good spot to adopt this in March. And then with the pandemic, we kind of just couldn't, we never wound up going back to it. I think we were on our final update. We were just looking for the board to be able to review the final language. We reviewed this multiple times as a board.
It feels like we've been doing it for like a year.
It's the policy that never ends. So we just wanted to make sure that we had made those final changes. I think we're going to review like a hundred of those changes. The only thing that we were looking at, that we didn't have this, and I constantly ask you and I think Tom reported it as well, the supplementals, the professional field trip, the town, the fundraising plan, those are just being developed and building, correct?
Yes.
And we'll be able to see those before then.
Yes, actually, I have to get back to Richard on that. I think Jackie Warburg, he was going to work, meet with you to, to submit for your approval, any fundraising.
I think he was going to develop the form, just submit to them.
No, I think this is funny that we're adopting this now.
Now, yeah. A lot of women say we probably won't have to encounter.
We're not adopting it tonight. Tonight, yeah, no. For the only two that are for adoption are computer use and student health services. The code of conduct has to have a public hearing before we can adopt it. So it has to be up for 30 days. So that public hearing, we actually can hold it on the 15th or we can hold it on the 3rd, September 3rd and then get it adopted on the 15th. So we would just, we just announced that it's a public hearing at the beginning of the meeting. Does anybody have questions on the code of conduct? Nobody usually does. And then you adopted the meeting at the subsequent meeting. Do you want to add the public hearing to the third or?
I think that makes sense, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to get it adopted. Okay, as soon as I'm in the air. Because a field trip and excursions is not adoption time.
No.
We're here.
Yeah, so if the board wants to look at it, then we can discuss it on, at the September 8th.
I know that we were waiting for that. It was a financial, you know, fundraiser.
Um, did you want me to say anything about the code of conduct? Like what you had written in the update, do you want me to?
When you give your policies up? Sure, that would be great.
Okay, so we'll be holding.
And the same.
Are we doing it preceding the September 15th or we're going to do it September 3rd? Proceeding the work session or after the work session?
I think we should do proceeding. How do you guys feel?
We do it at the beginning of the September 3rd.
Yeah.
So proceeding of the.
September 3rd special meeting. He was just. September 3rd special meeting.
Do we hold it September 3rd?
Yeah, so up for adoption or just those two? The health and the computer use and instruction.
So we're going to adopt it of the September 15th?
Code of conduct? Yes. Following any questions? Anyone may have at the point there.
Good. Thanks, Constance.
Yeah, so I shared a draft schedule of our three superintendent's conference days. I know in the past we talked about the topics that we are going to address. And we have a very rich and robust plan for those three days. We tried to really manage all of the needs and at the same time make it manageable because there's a lot that we need to go over the first day. Well, each of our faculty and staff members will be reporting to their buildings so that we can keep everybody in their locations, but also a little bit distant. And we'll be engaging in remote learning for all of the sessions. So they will be able to log in and follow along with everything. The first day is really the welcome back with everybody. So all faculty and staff will participate. And we've kind of unrolled it with the beginning being the priorities and then the different needs by faculty and staff. So for example, we know we're leading with health and safety. So that will be the priority at the beginning, the first morning, ensuring that everybody is comfortable coming back, understands the protocols, doesn't have any questions about what's expected for students, for faculty and staff, and also knows what has been done to prepare. And we'll go over the employee health screening app that we'll be including in the expectations. We'll talk about school safety with our representative, Mel Harris, and address the new lockdown drills and fire drills because there's some changes there. And then we have Dr. Foyer from Northwell Health, our partnership with them, who will address trauma-informed instruction. So that will be for everybody. The afternoon that day, we'll start to roll out some individual needs. But the faculty meetings that happen each year will happen that afternoon. Our building principals will address their faculty and staff. And there'll be time for teachers to get into their classrooms and do some final setup before the school year begins. The next two days are much more specialized. On the second day, we have a special education update by our PPS director and assistant director and Title IX updates. And that's for, again, everybody who start the day with everybody connected. And then the different groups, as you can see on the schedule, will break out for specific things that relate to their grade levels. We want to make sure that teachers have time to go over some of the curriculum writing projects that were done this summer, particularly for our math curriculum at the elementary level. They worked on identifying some of the gaps from last spring. So teachers have in their hands activities and lessons to start the school year to fill in some of those gaps in learning that might have occurred. Of course, technology support. We want to make sure everybody's comfortable with synchronous instruction before the school year begins because we, as we just mentioned, are going to be expecting all students who are hybrid and or remote or separated, distance in school to access learning through synchronous instruction, remote learning. And then time for faculties to have department meetings and work together. Then the third day, we have some other individualized training. And we have some opportunities for our elementary teachers to work on wonders, which is on your reading program. You'll hear more about that later in the year. And our social workers will be addressing all faculty in smaller groups on social and emotional learning. So that when the students come back, the teachers really know how to engage and, and develop those relationships in the beginning. Because again, this year is going to look very different than any other year. So that's our schedule. There's a lot there. We'll be talking more about it as we go through it. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
Do you want anybody from the board representing on September 2nd?
Yes. Yes, usually you have the president speak or a vice president for both, addressing all the faculty. And we will be in the auditorium. So you can come there and then speak. And then it will be, we'll get to you. Mr. Routh will figure out how to do that. He's doing it to resume, whoever's at the podium. So we begin, we'll add you in, board remarks. I'm going to curtail mine for the morning. I want to thank Mrs. Heck because this is a Herculean task. And she worked with, obviously, all of the administrators in identifying the areas throughout the summer and the different committees, this is part of the communication protocol and the training that was recommended by all of our eight committees. So that's really included there. She also met with the professional development committee and then had a final meeting with the RTA this morning to get a sample approval on the, on the three days of workshop. So I think, you know, it's never enough time, but I think it covers a lot of information, but also allows teachers time to work on things that they need to, in their classrooms, and get comfortable with trying out the technology. Thank you. And any questions on it? Protocol for.
Sharon, thanks. So it seems that, I, I said the other day, you know, I was texting out Lisa, saying that Kristen figured it late for the last meeting yesterday, you know? Because if you guys get them, if your parents, I don't get any because we changed the system and we had to change the system. So I'm just thinking if we get both at the same time, the day of the meeting, it'll be a lot easier. Because I've been getting so many emails every day and going through things every day that once it gets back to the stack, it's back to the stack. And then you got to dig through it and find it and all that stuff. So is it possible then, whenever we have a virtual meeting, to have it delivered that day, that morning? You know, and it serves as a reminder, number one. And number two, it's right there that day. So it's ready to go. I just thought it'd be a lot easier if we did it that way.
Luckily, John, he texted me, he got completely forgot. As a parent and as a board member, that would definitely, I was sitting at a college baseball game. Oh, boy. So I pushed myself all the way back and kept it on.
No problem. And then we had discussed putting this as a standard agenda item to talk about next month's agenda, the work session. So so far I have the field trip policy. I'd like to put on that agenda our curriculum presentations for the year and find out what the board, what we've come up with so far and what the board would be interested in learning more about. We always ask you for what would you like to see and learn more about in these public presentations? And then Mr. Healy, in the spring, the board had asked if we could get an update and a review of all of our special education programs and statistics. So Mr. Healy will be providing that presentation on September 8th. That still works for everyone. If you have other agenda, I know there were a few that were left over.
So if you got the agenda items that we suggested, we can get them on there now, right?
Yeah. We have the school rating, how, the school rating like? I have a quick story and I'll, I know we have to go. But my wife, one of my best friends lived in Franklin Square. So they're looking to buy a house. So of course they say, you struck, they named it, they come close to us. They refused to move here because of our school rating. So we're at a five, Franklin Square's at a nine. So again, I don't know much about it. So I reached out to Dom and said, what does this school rating mean? And how do we fix that, if anything? So Limerick's is seven, so I thought I'd do it some ways there. We're lower for the area. I just don't know how or what goes into that and how we fix it. But that was, again, they did their, ended up they're buying a house in Franklin Square. But even Ocean, Ocean Side was a nine, which at the time. But I think, and I don't know what goes into that. Is it enrollment and, you know, do we suffer because of our enrollment and the programs we have and the kids we bring in? I don't know, but something to look at, you know, now.
Send me that, because I don't, I'm not familiar with those numbers.
Yeah, so it's, yeah.
It's not synchronous.
Yes, like if you look, yes, I can send it to you. I'll send, I'll send you the link. But yeah, you can actually, it's on when you're looking for housing, any of those websites, DILLO, MSLI.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, MSLI, but it's also, there's actually a website that shows them all.
Right.
So, yeah, we will look into it a little bit. Because when she called, I'm like, and she's like, Mr. Board of Education, you don't even know that. I'm like, wait, I want two months.
It's not a real rating.
No, I was trying to split, listen, I went through the whole spiel. I gave her all the spiel. Like it's a free, it's a free private school basically. We're so small, we have, you know, each is own. But that was something, just something to look into.
Absolutely. You can send me the information, we'll look into it.
Sure.
Piggybacking on, on what Joe said, there's also the Blue Ribbon School District. So every parent for some reason loves to brag about that. I'm not 100% sure of what it is, what it means. For some reason, every parent thinks that it raises property values and it piggybacks on what he said. Is that a impossible process to undertake? And is that something that we would even want to go after?
So I, when I saw it from Dom, Mona and I were speaking, Mona's going to do a little research on it. I, I will tell you right now what I am familiar with. It's an incredibly extensive process.
I heard.
And I would not recommend that we look into it this year because of COVID. But we certainly can look into what, what is required and maybe make a plan for seeing if we would beat some of the criteria. I will say that a major, major factor was, I haven't looked into it recently, where we test, state test scores and our, because of our very. test scores and our, because of our very high opt-out rate that we've had over the past number of years, we've only had 65% participation in our state tests because we have many families who opted out over the last number of years. The opt-outs have been decreasing, but of course we didn't have state tests this past year. So I don't even know what Blue Ribbon School, what criteria they would use because there are no assessments, but assessments are a very big part of the Blue Ribbon process. But we will look into it and we'll bring it back and share it with you. And then if the board would like us to develop a plan to consider that for the following year, we would absolutely do that.
Lisa, if it takes, or everyone, if it takes two years to accomplish that goal, I think it's going to not only raise your school rating, but it's going to raise the overall perception in the district in a very, very big way. So it could be worth its weight in gold. I'm sure it's a ridiculous undertaking. Maybe we put together a committee or two.
That's usually what districts do, is buildings. They do it by building, building.
Right, I know Center Avenue was a Blue Ribbon, right?
Several years ago, 2006 or 2008.
So it was only for one year?
It was a big bonus.
No, no. The number of years, I'm not certain how many years it is. And by the way. But it's something that stays with you as a badge of honor, so to speak. So, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I know parents love that, so it might be something.
Creates some competition within the district when one school is in one school.
I think it's, you know, it could be great. What were you saying? I didn't interrupt. That's not the only one either. There are others out there, you know, certifications, that type of thing. So whatever, you know, I think it's a great point. I think that prestige is a big thing. I think competition is always good because it makes people realize that we have standards and we're looking for those standards. So whatever kind of research you could do on those, Mona, it would be great. It doesn't have to be only the Blue Ribbon. It might be something else that's prestigious enough that we can attend, right? I think that's the biggest thing, but I love the idea because I think that that gives a combative approach to, you know, the rating that's given by whatever that is. Right.
I definitely want to look into how that, that rating.
Right, again, that's why I had no clue.
It's on Great Schools.
Something like that. Exactly, yeah. We, I ended up finding, I'll send, I'll send the link now.
And they work with Realtors and everything.
Right, that's right.
I've made every school district and I just looked a couple around the area.
We did have a Realtors breakfast scheduled for last year. It was the week before we closed. Yeah, we closed on the 13th, I think it was scheduled for the 12th. We had all Realtors coming. We had done it a few years ago, it was a huge success. We had people who were so impressed by what this little district does. Yeah, we had Realtors come from all over. We had students performing, we had all of our administrators spoke, we had an art show, a breakfast. It was really lovely and unfortunately we canceled it.
And it changed the Realtors' perception.
Right, if you don't know about Rockwell, you don't know anything about Rockwell. You just go by numbers and you go by, you know, amount of money, the houses, look at the old school district, it's a five. Why would we pay that? And we can go here and it's a nine. But if, I mean, if you know this area and you come from here, you obviously know that the value of our school district. You know, I tried and unfortunately it didn't work.
Well, a few years ago, we were designated as a college board AP honors school, so you can counter with that.
We were a school of opportunity. We were also designated as a silver school of opportunity.
So maybe we promote that, but it would have been a long way while we're pursuing these other potential opportunities. What can we hang those on? Yeah, that should be all over the place.
Did, I mean, we did. It's kind of old now, it was 2013. So I think Syntec, yeah. I think they usually tell you that sometimes it's better to not have it than to have something that's old than you've been able to renew in terms of perception.
So that's the difference with the Blue Ribbon School District is, you know, you might have different insight because you're educators, administrators, so on and so forth. To a parent who doesn't know enough, just hears that Blue Ribbon School District and ding, 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 it's like the jackpot goes off. So that would be something worth keeping up on the site, even if it's 20 years old, 10 years old or something like that. I don't know, that's just the way, that's the perception of it.
We did promote the Schools of Opportunity and the AP Scholar for quite a while, who's in the strategic planning presentations and, because we were very proud of that.
You should, we should be as a district, that's underfired. More of that is basically a big difference. We could rather something like that, you know? It's just like when the band goes out to stage, you know, and went into a competition. It could have been the smallest competition anyway, but they come back with a trophy. Come back home to win. And, you know, it's held your head on something, so.
And I still tell people I was all conference center. Actually, I hear it about, I hear it at least once or twice a week.
I gotta visit on the algebra. You know what, I know how old that word is.
The last thing, that's because we're moving up, we got to get the, our meeting started. The last thing is that Lisa and I also spoke about the agenda items and when they're submitted because what had happened this past week, you know, Mary gives me emails saying she booked her items and I had some of those items and they just weren't the time wise. And that's how, when I got back to you all and said, you know what, Lisa's got a lot of your plate, let's do the gender, that's what she needs to, you know, the gender type, which we did. So I thank everybody for, you know, understanding that. So now we have, that I see in front of me, which is great, okay, it's the works, pre-work session meetings, okay? So all the agenda items and when they would be due. These are now, when the meetings always are?
Yes, the meet time that you, Kristin, and I would meet prior to the work, Thursday prior to the work session.
Okay.
So whatever time of day will work for you, we let the time open. But if people could get you those agenda items by that morning or the night before, then, and I can send this schedule out.
I was just going to say, you can send it out to everybody, you can send it out to everybody. This way everybody has this and just, you know, note, you know, because things come up as we're, you know, walking around the neighborhood and so on and so forth. This way you can say, you say, okay, let me get this in, this way it's in there and we get it on.
I mean, we can set up a shared Google Doc where people could just put their items in and then.
That's a great idea. Better idea. That's a very functional, terrific idea. On these dates, that'd be great. Yep.
And we'll send out a reminder that here's the document for this work session and you can just put in your items.
It's amazing to just access that document through the email?
Yeah, there'll be a link, you click on it and then we can discuss the agenda. Because sometimes, you know, when so many items are coming from so many places, we may not have enough time to cover everything in that particular meeting. So I would want the board to kind of evaluate which are the most important and which could wait.
And that'd be the reason why, that Kristin and myself would, you know, meet with Lisa, you know, phone, virtual, whatever, just to make sure we got everything covered we need for that particular work session, okay? So we had equal opportunities. Good, thank you. Okay, that was an ambitious agenda. I want to thank you, Lisa, Jackie, and also Mona for, you know, keeping us updated on what's going on. So it's now get ready to move? Yeah?